All right, I'd like to welcome you all to the South Burlington School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the South Burlington School Board. And I will have officially called the meeting to order. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? Does this work?
No, those aren't amplifiers. They're recorders.
We only have recording mics, not amplifiers, so I will do my best to speak up. All right, any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Four. Any amendments to the agenda, David?
Yes, we're gonna, under Superintendent's report, we're gonna remove big-picture enrollment. We're also gonna remove, under Consent Agenda, under Bids, the Playground Bid. And then, under Number 13, we're gonna just remove Action from 3.2 Accountability of Superintendent. So those are the amendments to the agenda.
David, can you, for the sake of the community, let them know when big-picture enrollment's gonna come back?
Yeah, so that will be back on, for those that would like to come back, it will be next week, June 18th.
Thanks. All right, I'll move on to our, any announcements?
Sabina, would you like to do the, you have announcements in front of you?
Sure, yeah.
They put you to work on a regular basis, you know.
Almost graduate.
Yeah, so the high school graduation is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at St. Michael's. And then, the elementary and middle schools are also holding recognition ceremonies for the fifth and eighth grades. And then, the middle school, I believe, is this Thursday?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, and then, I'm not sure about the elementary schools.
They have varied, just move up times, but...
Yeah, so that's really exciting. And then, there's a Legislative Breakfast scheduled for Tuesday, the 17th, from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning in the South Burlington City Hall Conference Room. I assume that's for, open to everyone?
It is an open meeting. It's primarily for School Board members, city councilors, and the legislators to talk about, you know, the closing of the session and things that, you know, are conversations for the future, so.
And then, there's a meeting on June 19th from 2:00 to 5:30 to explore the South Burlington City Center incentives and partnership opportunities.
David, do we know where that's gonna be held?
I think it's also gonna be in the City Hall. I got information from Kevin on that as well, and it will be somewhere in the city offices, City Hall area. I don't know what room yet. Thank you, Sabina.
Okay, thank you. All right, if we could take a minute, we'd like to recognize our student representative to the School Board, Sabina Lativovik, and I just would like to read this plaque to you.
Come on up, Sabina.
You were elected, come on, right here. You were elected by your peers, Sabina, to represent them on the Board of School Directors. Your active participation and positive contributions during the past two years are evidence that their trust was well-placed. Leadership and service qualities such as yours are assets to be valued throughout one's life. We thank you for sharing them with us.
And a card and the plaque, which was just ready. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sabina, for your service.
Sabina, maybe you're headed off to college, right? And you're headed off to Middlebury, so that's a nice thing for people to also know, but we wish you the best.
We hope you'll come back and visit.
Oh, definitely.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, City-School Collaboration.
Again, you heard some of that this evening, just with some of the collaboration going on, city-school, with the Legislative Plan Meeting coming up. And again, we continue to work with the city folks in that regard to really make sure we're staying abreast of some of the things that are happening. So we, we, those of you who don't know, we've been meeting on a regular basis, you know, city leadership and myself and Elizabeth, and some of that work is a result of, again, for example, the legislative kind of breakfast idea wrap-up. We usually do one in the beginning, prior to the session, but we felt it important to maybe do one prior, you know, after, so we can reflect and also talk a little bit more about what's needed to be discussed for the future. That's all I have.
All right, on to Agenda Number Nine, update on the status of the Howard Center permit to open the methadone clinic.
So currently, those of you, again, in the audience that maybe don't know, but we filed with the Supreme Court, we provided our testimony in front of the Supreme Court, and we're still awaiting that decision. We have not yet received the decision. And so, just want to make sure people are aware that we have no news to report at this time, and we'll continue to keep people posted. It will remain on the agenda until there is resolution, so when you see it on a future Agenda Item, you can know that it's still not resolved until it comes off.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten, the Proposed Grade Five Transition Report.
So I think it's probably safe to say that most of the folks here are here about that, and it's, I hope you can hear me, but again, it's nice to see folks out. I continue to be happy with the energy that's been created, and I don't know that all of you would use those same words, but I want to just say, you know, I know that love and care is in the community, and for that, I'm really, really thankful. So I have a brief statement I want to read, and I think maybe at the end, if there's questions that happen, we'd like to facilitate those questions and see what folks would like to talk about. I first want to acknowledge the commitment of everyone that was involved in the discussion, and again, teachers, staff, parents, and community, and students, to examine the advantages, opportunities, and drawbacks of moving grade five from the three elementary schools to the middle school, modifying the grade configuration from a pre-K five and six-eight to a pre-K four and five-eight model. Secondly, I'd like to personally thank the committees, specifically also the Steering Committee that put in countless hours. All of the committees gave up countless evenings on an almost weekly basis, asking hard questions, gaining clarification of purpose, and looking at all areas that would be affected. From the very beginning, my vision was to identify a model that would best serve our students and reflect best practices in education. I was convinced, committed, confident about grade five-eight options as it seemingly posed numerous positive opportunities for a grade five, while also benefiting the middle school students, the high school, as well as the high school and elementary experiences. It was enormously encouraging to see the commitment, engagement, and care demonstrated for the students of South Burlington, as I just said earlier, by all members of the community who participated in this process. My desire continues to have the grade five-eight option thoroughly reviewed and discussed with viable feedback to begin Phase Two of the process. As a result of the work of the various committees, my decision/recommendation to the School Board is to not pursue the initiative for the 15, 16 school year and move forward with the recommendations of the Steering Committee. I feel these recommendations, again, from the Steering Committee, are thoughtful, appropriate, and have my full support, and therefore, I suggest to the Board with the following recommendations: that we continue this work, establish a mandate purpose for the continued work, establish a design team in order to relaunch the process, organize the resource so that the studies can continue to be data-driven, and coordinate the goals, the timing, and the potential changes with the South Burlington City/School Master Planning and Visioning Process. And again, these are specifically recommendations that come specifically from the work of the committees that rolled into the Steering Committee. I'd like to close by, again, thanking everyone for their time and the commitment to this educational vision proposal and the willingness to stand ready to work on the steps as outlined above. I'm appreciative of all the efforts and the desire to keep the education experience of South Burlington the best we can make it. So, again, I want to reiterate, this plan was not for next year. Next year, initially, my desire was that we would be in a transition phase. The following year would be the transition phase. So this, my recommendation or proposal is that we do not move forward with that, but we wrap in the energy, we reestablish the focus, we align it with the master planning and visioning work, as you know, that's out there and certainly being recommended by both the city and the school, that we develop a longer-range vision and plan for the district with some of the current energy around discussing Chamberlain and the airport pressures, Rick Marcot and Central, Rick Marcot Central in the city center zone, and also Orchard. And so that we roll that into that work that's focused ahead. It is my hope that many of the folks that are currently engaged or have become engaged can perhaps continue in some capacity, if they're willing. I know that some, we've certainly probably exhausted and certainly recognize that you may want to then step outside and just be a really important listener as the process continues to move forward. I do feel strongly that, you know, for us to continue to be a good district, we've got to continue to look at ways in which we can, you know, to provide the best possible experience to our students. And it was my intention all along. My launching of this, as I said and many times before, I think was cumbersome. But again, it's not without a desire to make South Burlington and keep South Burlington a great place to live and learn. So with that, I'd like to maybe just open it up for questions from the Board maybe first, and then the community. I don't know. Again, this is information that's being provided to the Board as well.
Are there Board questions?
So essentially, just one, I think, quick question. The work of the committees initially really didn't show whether it was a good or bad idea. Is that essentially where you are?
Well, I think there wasn't a compelling 100% assertion that it was, at this point, all of the answers affirmed the move, right? There were still unanswered questions around, you know, some of the components of curriculum. There were some resourcing questions. There were some emotional and social issues that we wanted to, that I felt needed to continue to still be talked about. And again, this is also, I definitely did not choose to provide additional clarity to the committees when they began, because I wanted them to really allow for kind of that homogeneous discussion to erupt within. And again, I know that some committees started right off and had a clear, the infrastructure group, I think, can we fit the kids here? You know, that was a much easier, very defined, whereas around curriculum, around the community outreach piece, the committee definitely had a tougher time saying, hey, what are we here for? What are we doing? You know, and I know that there was some level of question with that. But at this point, there's still, there's been a lot of questions that have been answered, but there's still needs, there's a need for additional clarity. And some of that clarity is about our future, and our future being, you know, some of the schools. And again, I've heard that from the committees of, it seems like it would make sense that we roll this into a larger conversation as a result of some of the things that, again, this Board has been talking about for quite some time, you know, master planning and visioning, grade configurations, airport community concerns as well. So I also want to recognize, you know, we have a lot of, maybe if I could just get a quick show of hands of people who actually served on a committee, just, number one, to recognize you and thank you, but also know that you're here. So again, I want to thank you. And also, Joanne Godak, and I don't know if Melissa's here, co, yeah, she's here as well, co-led the Steering Committee. And so I have them both here too, if there's specific questions that the Board might want to ask them as well. I don't know if there's other questions. I don't know.
David, I just had a question in terms of the master planning and visioning and planning the schools, and what is the next specific step in terms of how that aligns and when the conversation begins and...
Well, there's no, there's no, the master plan, that hasn't happened. The last time we did this was eight years ago. It was much narrower in the scope than we did before. It was much more school-driven, just kind of, are we, you know, are we doing it right? And, you know, asking those critical questions, do we have the right things and are we doing them right? And that report certainly at that point identified options, but basically said, we're doing it right and we have the right systems in play. We knew at that point, eight years ago, that there were some pressures coming, but there really wasn't any energy around that, so there was no impetus for further work. This work with master planning is on the table, as I said, beginning collaboratively with the city in September. And so, we need to frame that out, and I think the work of this committee, these committees, will really help shape some of the school conversation, particularly from the elementary, but a very specific configuration question, and then facilities, curriculum, locations, et cetera. City spaces, city center, how does that all fit? And again, this is why we would use, as we did last time, a consultant that came in and help us really through that. Again, a very, very, I would anticipate, a very community, hands-on process, you know, through a variety of iterations, more so than we did last time. I think we had four or five community outreach sessions where we did a multitude of planning. I think it would be far more entailed than that. So we have been in conversation with somebody to do that work. It was the same group that did it last time, so we've been in conversation. But again, nothing has really been mapped out of the, kind of the, you know, all of the details that need to be worked through, where the plan. And again, the Board would be involved in that, as the City Council would as well.
So David, specific to the Steering Committee's four recommendations, what's kind of the timing and is there a discussion around, you know, who would be included in this design team? And I guess is there a lower level of detail to these recommendations?
Some of this, I think, you know, has to intertwine and go together with the master planning. Once the master planning and visioning kind of timeline gets sorted out and shared and approved essentially by Board and Council, there is a piece within that that I think is the grade configuration question or facility and grade configuration question that then would prompt this particular focus group or focus energy to start. I think we have to definitely put those together now. We know that they're important, can't be separate, need to be together. Before this really can work, I think that master planning and visioning timeline, strategies, and details need to get more figured out before we would be able to launch into this.
So would that be fair to say, then, that this, the Steering Committee's recommendations would be revisited with more specificity after, like in the fall, basically?
Correct, yeah. And again, I want to let Joanne Godak, who's here, also, you know, respond to that as well. We've had conversations about that, but Joanne...
Yeah, I think the main thing that we were saying is that the, sort of, the decision to create a five-eight middle school was too narrow and too divisive. We wanted to make sure we had the right question. You guys can nod your heads if you feel that helps. We had the right question. We want to make sure what the right question is. So putting together a design team, once we've worked with the city on what's going on in the city, putting that design team to really put forward what we believe as a school community is going to be the best thing for our students is what we want to do. And there's more detail, the consultants that work with us have more detail in the appendix of the report about what that might look like and how we might do that, so.
One thing that impressed me with the packet that the Board received is, and I appreciate the hard work that all the committees had going into this, but there's a wealth of information that exists right here now that I think will serve as the platform, once, as you said, the right question is defined and answered, that really becomes sort of the tactical supports behind that. So I have to say, I was really impressed with, one, the level of detail, but also, consistent with the updates the Board was getting throughout the process, there was always a series of unanswered questions, and some of it was time-related and some of it was just expertise-related. So even those questions exist in terms of what needs to be responded to before we can really tie that down. So I really do, to the community and to those that participated, very impressive body of work here. Any other Board questions, David?
Also, just again, I don't have a desire to, you know, make this longer. But again, I really, you know, I think the initial charge is what it was by me. I think there was a lot of questions around, you know, my desire to do this. I want to say, as I think you just, as you just alluded to, there's a lot of really, really good work here that went into this. And I feel really, really, you know, extremely appreciative of the desire to continue, to help us to think deeply about our resources and how we can leverage our resources to continue to make this district the best possible place it can be. In some ways, you know, we have been a district that has done great things, and I want to keep it that way, but it does not mean that we can't ask harder questions by you to us or us to you. And I do want to create an environment where we can ask those hard questions. And I do think some of you who come to our Board meetings, and that's really important to us, to the Board, where you can ask us the hard questions so that we can be looking through those lenses so that we're reflecting and making those changes. As we sometimes, myself, I need to ask those questions. You do pay me to ask, you know, to think about ways in which we can make that, the experiences for our kids the best with the resources that we have. And so I know that this was cumbersome, but again, I remain committed and proud to be part of this community in our efforts.
So I do want to open it up for a few minutes, and had we known, had the Board known that offering babysitting services would allow for this kind of attendance, we would have done it years ago. But just in the interest of those of you who have taken the time out to participate, I do want to open it up for any questions or comments that folks may have. If you can just identify yourself.
My name's Kelly Doperty, and I appreciate the desire to reexamine the question and determine what the question is, what the best course of action is. I'm curious if, as part of that work, this is sort of a comment and maybe a question that can't be answered yet, that possibly we could examine the fifth-grade experience while it still is in the elementary schools and see what we might be able to do to enhance their experience while they're there, a sort of a transition step to when the fifth grade, if the fifth grade does eventually move to the middle school. Are there things we could do sooner rather than later to enhance their experience? You know, budget-neutral or not, but curriculum-wise or activity-wise or social, emotional, needs-wise?
I'm not going to try to answer all the questions. We wouldn't have enough time. What are you doing, David? But, you know, one of the things I think that is really important for people to know is because of the conversations and the dialogue that's been happening by the committees and what's been shared by the committees to others, we have begun to examine our practices more thoroughly here at the middle school, through the administrative leadership and the classroom teachers. And I would say that that's also happened to some extent at the elementaries as well. So I think your point is right on. I do want to say that, as a result though, we, some of those conversations have been happening already. So for that, I'm also proud of the conversation. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a, I guess, probably a related question. It seemed to me, maybe I'm mistaken, but given the nature of your sort of initial announcement of this proposed, and the ambitious timeline for the proposed change in grade layout, it seemed to me that you had a sense of urgency, that the situation that we have now is problematic, and there was a sense of urgency that we should make this move that would improve the educational experience for fifth graders and maybe also sixth through eighth graders. And I was wondering where that came from, what triggered that? What you felt was the urgent, were the urgent issues that had to be addressed as quickly as possible? And whether the fact that you're now kind of, you know, putting the brakes on a little bit and going back and reexamining if you feel that there are still those same important issues that are now not going to be resolved? Whether it's educational experience, curriculum, other extracurricular activities, resources, whatever it is.
I don't know if I'll get up to all of those, but just on the urgency timeline piece, and part of the desire when we started, again, January, December, January through now, and it was aggressive, because I do feel like it would not be appropriate to ever make a transition for children to start a new school year and work into a school year and make a decision, I'm going to say, the following December or January, to say, oh, now, oh, by the way, you're going to move. I don't think that's right for kids, I think, and moms and dads. I think they need to be informed well in advance about their, if it's going to be their final year. And so that was why all of next year was going to be about talking about a transition from the very beginning of the school day, the school year, and then the transition would happen the following year, right? But that was really the, kind of, my idea and timeline, that it would be kind of the January to June. Absolutely, I agree with you, that it was too aggressive. You know, we needed more time, given the need for clarity in the work. So although it's not for not, it's going to continue to be part of a conversation that looks at, as Joanne alluded to, that bigger question.
Any other questions? Yes.
My name's Al Marillas. I've got a first, third, and fifth grader in the Orchard School. And, you know, there's been talk about sort of reforming the question, and I think that's really key, because it feels to me like we started at a cure with the, how do we do this and when can we do this? And I think the real question needs to be, why do we do this? And so maybe that's where sort of we're going with going back to the master planning and letting some tactics like this one fall out of the master plan. I actually just drove over from the fifth grade graduation at Orchard School. And, you know, maybe I'm sort of alone in this, but I don't think so. What a fantastic experience those students have there. And I appreciate all the work that you guys do to make that happen. It's an amazing experience. And David, I really appreciate your intention to make that great experience across the entire set of grades here in the district. So I really, I think, engaging these parents more frequently, trying to get some collaborative effort going on sort of, why is this the right thing? We've got something that's working really well. I know we've got a number of high priorities in the district that are sort of immediate priorities that need to be addressed, so, you know, does this particular tactic sort of justify itself in the priority list? And, you know, I guess that'll just fall out of the master planning effort, so I'm glad to hear sort of you're heading back in that direction, so. Thanks.
Another question, I guess, a comment, sorry.
Yes.
Tom Chittenden, I have three very small children, and they are going to be entering. My question is just, how much of a priority is it to expand the pre-K offerings within the elementary schools going forward?
In the schools, I would say that's not a, that would not be a major focus right now. Again, I think, you know, again, refocusing the question, that would be something that we should all talk about. That's really, really important. I do think that it's important to have a balance within our community about appropriate care providers all over. And so I don't think that the school necessarily can be the sole resource for a pre-K program. We're a collaborator in that area, and I think that needs to be a very delicate balance. So the intention here is to not create or pull away from our care facilities, preschool programs that are out in our community. We are a community that started a few years ago, you know, with about four or five, and we're up to 35, 36 pre-K partners right now that are connected at the South Burlington School District. And, you know, we're providing professional development opportunities to them, and we're collaborating on a regular basis, and I think that's a really important mix. So that said, we do want our schools to be positive, you know, community centers for, you know, moms and dads that have really young children and making sure that they're feeling comfortable to come in. So getting that mix is important, an introduction to the schools.
Yes.
I'm Stan, because you probably can't see me. Thank you. I'm Sandy Fleming, and as you know me, I come to a few School Board meetings. I just want to say I was impressed with reading the report, especially the questions and concerns that the committee members had, and also with the independent questions, because I think the collaborators that came in to ask questions, because I think they brought up a big point of, let's look at this in a different way. And I feel that even by reading, David, your page here, it's still, it seems very vague and unknown. And I think that feels, again, as parents, we're in the position of feeling like, what's going to happen? And now, there's no timeline, so now, as parents, we're going to be okay. So it's not... So it's not our current third graders, so it could be our current second graders. And that makes parents feel very uncomfortable. And I think what I really was impressed with the report is saying, what is the best place for our fifth graders? Not, does a five to eight work, but what's the best place for our fifth graders? And then also looking at, again, like, what's working in our schools? If it's working, why, why change it? So I think just going forward, this is kind of the same position that we started in, in January, where parents are feeling, again, we're going to feel like, what's happening? What's the role? And there's really, now we have to wait for, we're going to do some planning, but still there's no, to think if we can have some sort of more specific, I just felt like in the report, the, and what Joanne, I guess, said in the beginning, is like, what's going to be the best place for fifth graders? And that might be staying in their elementary schools, or it might be moving to fifth grade, but looking at it a wholly different way. So I would just encourage moving forward to not, this to me seems like we're starting over again, but just with a little bit more specific guidelines, whereas I think the question needs to be totally different.
So, I said I wasn't going to respond to everyone. It's my problem.
You can't resist that urge.
I know. Sandy, your point is really good, and I, I don't, you know, again, as I said about the, any kind of transition, I want to be really mindful of, you know, those appropriate messages that we provide to children. But this is a part of a bigger question, right? It's, and what the committee has said is, there's, it's part of a bigger question, our configuration and master planning. And so what I think is really important, the takeaway, is that we, we want, we need you, we want you, and this next step in master planning is going to be really important that you help us shape that, that timeline, that discussion. And we ask not only these questions about fifth grade, but we ask the larger questions. And it's likely that we'll come right back to right where we are now. And if that's true, we've done a really good job in, in, in the configurations and the curriculum and the services that we provide. But I would just like to say that, you know, the dialogue and the discussion that's going to unfold is really important, that people stay engaged. And there's no, there's no trickery here. It's really about, you know, staying connected with us. And again, as I said earlier, kind of the, the give and take around, you know, what's the best. So, appreciate it.
Marcie?
Hi, I'm Marcie Murray, and I have, I was, I had some teenagers at my house tonight. Two are in college now. One is a 10th grader, and they all went through South Burlington Schools. And this has been kind of off my radar. I actually came for another issue tonight. But I asked them, I'm just, my heart, but that's all your parents who have younger children. But I just threw the question out to the teens that were at the dinner table tonight and what they thought. And, you know, and they were like, what? Like, they, and I, I, you know, that was about the fifth to eighth, so I, and one of them says, even sixth graders are too young to be with eighth graders. So my, my only, my only comment was, and you're probably going to be doing this, is really getting student input, people who have gone through this and maybe some high school students, and asking them, because I was just shocked at the negative reaction to, to the proposal. And I'm sure you have all these other ways to make this easier, but probably students might have some insight, you know, into helping get to a good compromise once, if this is a change that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that, too? That I think in your next round, seeking out parents, I, I was asking parents that I know that do, that aren't at the elementary schools anymore, what their opinion was. And they seemed very hesitant to get involved. I think they got the sense that there was a lot of very, very vocal people in the elementary schools involved, and there was kind of a sense of like, I'm not touching that. So if there's a way that you, when you relaunch the conversation, I think it would be very important to have those families that have been through the high school, both the students and the parents, that could bring their two cents forward. So it seems, you know, it covers maybe a broader experience level.
Thank you.
My name's Beth Ross, and I think I'm, I'm a little confused because you are, you, I hear you saying, David, that you're going to, there's going to be conversation about the master plan that's happening at the same time as committees are going to discuss whether this still is a viable option. And to me, this master plan is something grander than probably most parents can get a full grip on, if you're going to be moving things for the airport or Central is going to close because of city planning. I mean, this is something that I think, I mean, me from the Orchard community would not really, you know, I'd sort of go with the flow there. So if the committees are going to be making these decisions, but then you decide to close a school, that, that may, changes public opinion to me. So it seems like it makes more sense to develop a master plan and know what's going to happen before you discuss this move to fifth through eighth. And my other comment is, is that there has been a majority, as you could see in the survey that went out, of people who don't want this to happen in itself. And to me, that is the reason not to do it, because it's not going to work if parents don't want it to work. And I know I've said that many meetings. But if there's a master plan and there's a greater reason, then the public may come behind you. But without that, I don't, I don't, I can't see how that's going to change.
So, agreed. The, the master plan really needs to be the major driver here in that when we talk about, the city may talk about locations that are available, they may talk about things they want to do within the city, there may be conversations that are happening then as a result of that and, and, and future properties. I mean, all, I mean, I, I'm just coming up with, you know, ideas here. And so you're right. I mean, I don't really want to have work that's happening by a committee then only to be usurped by a master plan. So again, as I said earlier, there's careful, needs to be careful consideration in delineating the purpose and plan, city and school, of a master plan. It may have very little effect on the school. I don't, you know, I don't know. But I think having that conversation is important for us to have now and not just wait and see. You know, it's important for us to be at the table, talking with, what are your intentions for city center now in 10 years? And again, they agree, and I think we, we need to understand that first. Help delineate, design the timeline, expectations, and purpose, city and school, with community input, and then allow for, you know, the necessary feedback, for instance, like the work that's happened here. The activation of then, it might be from master plan, maybe some of these committees and others become involved in providing, you know, critical information to that group. So, or critical information within the group.
Okay, we'll take a couple more questions if there are any, or comments? Yes.
Two relatively quick questions. Donna?
Donna.
Number one would be, is there a timeframe in which you envision the committees reconvening? And my second question would be, fifth grade is currently graduating at Chamberlain, so Holly will ask me to attend. And so I think my question is going to be, when all the second grade parents start coming up to me and asking me, is it going to be their grade, what should I say to them?
It's off the table. It's, you know, the work of the committee and all of the good findings that happened have been put into, you know, into play. There's been a lot of helpful dialogue that's helped inform middle and elementary. It's off the table. It's part of a conversation that's going to happen on a larger front around master planning and visioning, city and school. That's what I would say.
Yes.
Mark Gable.
Hi, Mark.
Community outreach and general pain in the ass to most of you throughout this report.
Adult member of the.
They wanted me or not. Right, Stuart? So I'm going to go back to Martin's original question of, was this a good idea or a bad idea? And I think we came up with, you know, it's in the report, is that it was neither. You know, it, we never figured out if it was a good idea or a bad idea, and no one's going to be able to answer that unless you went forward with it. And then the real question is not, is it good or bad, but is it better than what we have now? And is it worth the cost to the community, to the culture of the schools, even to the middle school and the high school, and the older students looking up and back down as we kept talking about, in order to, to try to make this work? And what I took from all these meetings was that it was incredibly overwhelming trying to force this thing to work, especially in the timeline that you originally presented, David. And I, I don't have any doubt that your intentions were good. There is no question that you were trying to do what was best for the students. However, I think that, you know, the big picture planning is enormous and very important. And restating the question as not, is it a K through eight, or a five through eight model, but what is the best model for South Burlington schools? You know, the question has to be much, much broader, rather than, I keep hearing, more specific? No, less specific. It's got to be, what is the best model? And not just the best model for an elementary school, but for the middle school and the high school, and for all of the students attending and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more question. I think there was one in the back of the room.
She's opted out.
All right, you can pick. Over here? Yes.
Okay. So I just want to follow, follow, follow Mark's comments. Since we already identified, oh, I'm zero, zero one. Since we already identified the current model, that's a better model. So why not, I mean, so broad up the view or thinking, why not thinking about views of other model? Actually, because I'm also educator. So why not thinking about kindergarten to sixth grade? I think that model and the seventh grade, seventh grade to eighth grade, that's a middle school model. I think that is more appropriate for the, for the kids' emotional and the social needs. Especially for the younger kids.
Respond?
No.
Okay.
Again, I think, I, again, similar comments. It's about the, the larger question, what is the best configuration, bigger plan. So again, I, I heard what you were saying. I think it's appropriate. So again, I just want to say thank you for, that's not even really appropriate to, just to say thank you. There's immense amount of work, there's been immense amount of passion, concern. I just want to thank people for, for their energy and hope that it will continue to stay engaged and connected to us. We'd love to have some more visitors and, and folks coming to our board meetings and providing us some really valuable information, you know, about how things are going. So that wasn't the reason that I did this, though, to get you all to come. But I want to thank you for being here. Thank you.
All right. Well, in the unlikely event any of you are not staying for our entire agenda, I will just give a couple minutes for people who might want to leave here. Thank you. And we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 11, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you.
And our first item is a contingency kindergarten teacher at Orchard School.
Yeah, so I did provide the board in your packet with information about, about the kindergarten situation when we initially did our master planning, or our, just got to get off the topic, sorry, demographic work with, we're looking at enrollment predictions. It's always a very difficult one, and we expected an incoming number of students to be around that 52 mark, which was consistent with actually the past three years. But what we have right now is 66 actually marked in forms, I mean, they're up close to, they're 68 right now. So the additional teacher in to Orchard is important. And again, I don't, I don't have authorization to do that because it was a contingent compa- part of the budget. So I'm asking for board approval for the additional kindergarten teacher, contingency teacher to be to Orchard.
So this was not highlighted on mine, so could you just go through the?
Yeah, so the two things, page one was actually, your first page, page one of the graph. If you go down to Orchard, you see what was the actual or proposed in the budget was 52, 52 students with three teachers. Are you with me so far? And then page two of the report, I just, page two of the report, same graph, but puts in the number that we now have confirmed, or we did then at 66, actually it's at 68 now. And it just highlights for you, and I put the fourth teacher in to show you the, the configuration if it was to be approved.
So class size on this is going from the proposed 17.3, and with a contingency teacher, it would go to 16.5.
Correct. Obviously, three under the 66 or 68 is a, is a concern, and that's why I'm asking for the, for the contingency teacher.
David, do you have any insight into why this is happening? Why such a big change?
We're asking those questions. We do have the, you know, we have information around address. Again, part of its desirability, part of its affordability and housing in that particular area. We have some more affordable housing that's been opening up in the Orchard area. That's been a drive. Beyond that, I, you know, it'd be speculation on my part. We're, we're going to ask more questions because the volatility here is, is a concern. We typically, you know, have been in that 50, 53, 55 mark.
Are these really new people with South Burlington, or are they just people we didn't identify before?
There's, there's new, from what I understand, new families moving in with new children. I don't, again, if it's, our live birth estimations are off from those that were here, and also those that have immigrated to, to South Burlington. So we're, we're going to work that out. Our demogra-
What I'm thinking is, is there an unidentified number of youngsters, if you will, preschool kids in that population that just isn't used to warning the system, or the system isn't sensitive to it?
Our preschool accountability is excellent because we've got our partners, and we've identified those that are of, you know, kindergarten age.
We're not surprised.
So that's not it. There's an anomaly here that we've just had an influx, and we've got to figure that out. And right now, it's, you know, it's definitely, it's a, you know, it's, it's a good concern, but we, we don't want to be reactive in our, in our budgeting future, so.
The other two schools seem to be stable?
They do right now. Again, we're still under a choice situation, under no child left behind. We have one school that remains available for choice, so that's Central School. So the two elementaries, because they're similarly grade configured, can go to, go to Rick Marcot. We saw an uptick in that.
Downtick this year.
Oh, we saw, no, but the first year we saw an uptick.
This past year, we saw really not much going on with outmigration.
And so, and, and at this point, we actually think it's going to be even, even lower. So that won't help us. And again, actually, next year, because of the no child left behind status, all schools will be identified.
If I'm reading the charts right, kindergarten county is going down at Chamberlain and going up at Central.
That's right. So it's, there, there's some moving.
Versus the, versus the reference plan, reference.
Yep. We're going to work to figure it out, you know, demographically, what's going on. We do have, again, are the affordability options, is that part of it? Is it, you know, folks moving, you know, in? I don't, I don't know. But these were students that were not on our radar, if you will, prior to, so.
It's curious to me that they're all growing at kindergarten level, not, not anything happened to any other level.
Yep.
All right. Unless there's other questions, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to add a contingency, or to use contingency funds for kindergarten teacher at Orchard School?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, administrative reports.
So the first bulleted item here is regarding the City of South Burlington Energy Committee, and it's really a, kind of a misnomer here because while the Energy Committee has been really important to the solar array project, it is really, what's in front of you in your packet is the solar array proposal. And there's no action on this, it's for discussion. What I want to say is that, that we do have folks from the Energy Committee that have been really instrumental in, in having this discussion with the city and the school. So they're here to answer some questions. This is really a question-answer period. If it is the will of the board, there's a possibility that it can come back on in front of you on the 18th. I do have the Energy Committee delighted to come back and actually more formally introduce themselves and provide a little bit more of their overall desire in the city and school to help with energy, energy efficiency. So that's- So that's currently will be on the agenda for the 18th. But what I'd like to do, again, just is to introduce this, is that the general proposal came to us from the city and the city exploring the opportunity, put solar array on the capped landfill in the city of South Burlington with the solar, solar arrays that would obviously generate electricity, that would provide credits back to the city. Because there was enough, a large amount of credits, this, they needed another partner and thus being in our school and city cost sharing, recognize us as a potential partner to share some of those credits. And those credits equate to savings on the, on the energy bill. And so that's, that's kind of the, the general scope of this. There is a fair amount of concerns, and I have not vetted through legal, and that's not to say I don't believe it to be right, but any kind of commitments with, with dollars forward, you know, is a, what I would say is a question mark forward for me. And again, part of the reason why I'm not, I would not say yes to this is that it commits funds or commits commitment beyond what I can do. And, and again, this is either a 10-year or 20-year commitment. And so it's really in front of, of you to, to have that. What I'm going to say, kind of a, a quick overview and discussion question, answer period, I would like them to probably vet it if you remain interested to vet it through kind of our attorney, our attorneys, and then think about bringing it back in front of you. The, the city looks to us as a potential partner, important partner. If we're not then going to be part, then they'll have to seek somebody else to capture those credits that they can't use, so. Yes?
What is the, I guess I don't understand, what is the commitment of funds? I didn't see anywhere where we are committing.
There's no commitment, no commitment of funds. There's a commitment to accept credits down the road, but you have to stay part of an agreement that would allow to accept the credits. So there is a, a commitment in a 10 or 20-year.
It's a long-term commitment.
Yeah.
Well, it's right, it's a long-term commitment to be getting a benefit. I, I guess I'm trying to see the downside of this. I don't see a downside of a commitment.
Nope.
And spell it out, maybe it's there, I'm just missing it.
Yeah.
But, you know, a downside of getting credits on our energy bill for 20 years. Sign me up for 100 years. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm just not seeing it.
That's, again, part of, part of this is important to me is that while I'm committed to, to looking at ways that we can become efficient, I'm also looking at ways to partner with the city. I'm looking at ways to be good collaborator with other committees like our Energy Committee. But I'm also wanting to be really right out front with you is that I'm not authorized to do things beyond one year. And I'm also not wanting to take on, you know, re, you know, commit to resources, whether it be managing, I'm not sure of that, or evaluating or looking into things that are going to be, you know, having to be paid attention to for a longer period of time without the board really being at the table with me to say, you know, we're, we're good with it. On the surface, this, this certainly appears to be a really, really appropriate situation. I like the fact that it's, you know, city property, city cap landfill, city school collaboration, Energy Committee. I think there's a lot of things that are really positive, but it's in front of you because, you know, I'm not able to, to make those and I want you obviously to be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other thing is, if, if we're able to reduce the budget and therefore the tax burden to the, to the city residents, I, I think we'd be remiss in not pursuing this, so.
What, what's the commitment of time on the part of our staff?
So, so let me, let me just do a quick pause. I've got Don Cummings, Don, and Linda McGinnis and Marcy and Steve are all kind of part of the Energy Committee group from the city. There's a lot of other folks as well. But maybe, I've given you a brief introduction, we'll do more of that next time, but any one of you like to respond to that? Don?
I'm Don Cummings, I'm currently the chair of the Energy Committee, but Linda's been working with us as a volunteer to help us identify more solar or renewable energy opportunities. So she has actually studied this a little bit more than the rest of us. I'd like her to give you a little sense of what we're trying to do here.
I work with schools and municipalities across the state, and I just wanted to also let you know that there are several other schools around the state who have already done this. And there are many school superintendents and principals who would be happy to come here and share their experience with you if you had any further questions, and I'm happy to help arrange that. I'm also on the board of the Clean Energy Development Fund and was the director for the state's citing commission, the governor state citing commission. So I come to it with an interest in making sure that the public sector understands what benefits are out there right now for them. And there's a relatively short window of time, which is the next two years, after which the federal tax credits are going to expire, and these kinds of deals will no longer be available. So that was part of my interest in making sure that people were aware of the savings that could be generated for the taxpayers at this level. In terms of the time commitment and the management, it, I think the bulk of it will come in the beginning, just making sure that from a legal perspective and writing in our, and writing the, the net metering agreement, it's already drafted. The city has already signed a letter of intent with Encore Redevelopment to do this project. So the project's going to be done whether or not you're a partner. It's, it's actually, of all of the different projects that I've looked at across the state, it's the least time consuming of all of them that I've seen, in large part because the city's done most of the work and has vetted everything legally from their standpoint. In terms of the, the management over time, the responsibility for the capital input, the maintenance, the decommissioning when the project is done, all of that is on legally the hands of the developer who's going to do the project. That's, that's what the arrangement is. And so from your perspective, all it would be, would be oversight with the city, and the city is going to take the bulk of that. So a time commitment, from what I see, but again, I'm not in your shoes, so I don't know, is really very minimal. And the benefit, at least from the estimates that we're getting right now and that has to be worked through, is up to $50,000 a year for you. That you could spend however else you want, and clearly in a tight budget environment, that's a welcome thing to have on an annual basis, so I'll stop there.
And so in, in terms of that two-year window and the grant, is that, are those tax benefits grandfathered? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes. So if you do the project in the next two years, but ideally in the time scheduled based on what the city would like to have happen, if you sign the agreement, then it can begin next month in terms of the process, the permitting process. The whole project would be probably available to you in terms of the benefit by next June, so at the beginning of that school year. And in terms of the, if you do it within the next two years, all of the benefits are, are there in terms of the federal tax credits. The sooner you sign, the better the, the deal is right now, just because that's what Encore Redevelopment has managed to get together with the city. And the city's going to have to act on that within a relatively short period of time in the next couple of months. If you want to sign on, then you can sign on. If not, the city will go and find somebody else. But from just a, I'm trying, an objective observer, having worked with other schools, I think it's a really pretty great deal that you have in front of you with minimal time.
So let me follow the spirit of what Martin was asking. Over the years, I've learned a couple of things. There aren't any free lunches. Okay? And whenever you think you're seeing something that's too good to be true, it's not true. So this smacks of both of those things.
I know.
Why, you know, what is it that's convincing that says neither of those is true?
If I could just add, the federal government is providing incentives to get the solar industry moving and as a kind of a national priority to make our energy supply greener. So they're providing significant incentives to the 2% to 30% of capital investors, which is substantial. The state has, in their rate structure, and Green Mountain Power initiated this on their own accord and were within Green Mountain territory, they initiated a 6% per kilowatt hour adder for any power you produce, and the adder is over and above what a typical resident pays. We're currently paying in the 15 cent range. So Green Mountain Power, because they think it's in their best interest to manage their peaks with in-state solar energy rather than buying it out of state at market prices, which are very high during the summer. They see it in their interest to provide renewable energy, particularly solar, which peaks during their peak period of demand. So the, the power company is providing incentive. The state actually provides an incentive and the federal government provided incentive. So it does seem like a free lunch, except somebody is in fact paying for it. The taxpayers are subsidizing all the credits. Green Mountain Power finds it more, less expensive to pay the solar adder than to pay market prices during their peak hours of demand. So it's not exactly a free lunch, somebody's paying for it. So another way to look at this is-
What, what is the possibility that those that are paying for it decide to no longer pay for it?
Once the deal is cooked.
It's grandfathered in.
It's cooked. It's a 20-year, it's, the solar cells are good for 20-
The legislature can't do anything about that?
No, because the-
Congress can't do anything about that?
The incentives are given, so the capital cost is underwritten to some extent.
Well, and I think if, I mean, if, if the legislature did something about that, we just wouldn't be getting that $50,000. I guess then we'd have to budget for that additional $50,000. But I'll give you another example to make you feel better about there maybe being some, some problems out there. There could be a quid pro quo, and I would never suggest this is actually going to happen, from the city. You know, the city council has given us this $50,000 benefit, you know, if there's some sort of disagreement with them down the road, are they going to want a quid pro quo of some? I don't know. I'm just trying to speculate to some downside. But I don't think the downside is from the deal itself.
Legally, it is grandfathered in.
And that's been sort of set in stone. I work with the legislature a lot and they can't go back on that because legally, and it's for, once you sign the agreement, you're allowed to have it for that 20-year contract that you sign. It's a 20-year contract. And so they can't go back on that deal. And the, the interesting part about the 30% federal tax credit is right now, that's really only available to private sector. It's not available to the public sector. You can't get the federal tax credit, right? So it's through this type of tripartite deal that many schools, not just in Vermont but around the country, are doing this, and municipalities around the country to enable those who need it most, which in my view is the public sector, which is struggling to make ends meet, to have to benefit from something that was an incentive intended for everybody, but really because it's a federal tax incentive, it only goes to the private sector. So it's through this private tripartite agreement that you're enabled to do that.
Are there other schools within Chittenden County that are taking part in this or, yes? Okay.
And in fact, this developer, Encore Redevelopment, has worked with Burlington School System. That's not in GMP territory, so it's a slightly different thing, but it's the same type of arrangement. And I have a list of all the schools here that I can leave with you that already have the agreement and others that are underway. And I have links to website, websites that if you want to go and read what the deals are and all that sort of thing, so I'm happy to leave that with you. But there's the Burlington School District that is the easiest one for you to look at. Essex is currently under a negotiation with Encore. Ducksbury, Cross at Brooks Middle School has done it with Green Lantern Capital and Sun Common. Middlebury has done it with Encore. Bratton Borough has done it with Sovereign Solar. There's, there's, it's a range of developers, all of whom are doing more or less the same type of, of agreement with different schools. And many of them are already signed and on the way. And I'm, as I said, I'm happy to bring in principals or financial managers or superintendents to talk to you.
Norm Emdken, who is the superintendent's association, association's energy management consultant. And so, I mean, one of the things that a lot of people have been asking is, because the resource has said, hey, you know, how do, how do we navigate through this? We're, we're being approached, you know, how, what's the best way? What are the liabilities, et cetera? And so I did connect with him and there's been a fair amount of pro bono work that's been done by a lot of legal agencies and it's been highly supportive. And, you know, one of the things that has come back is that they're very supportive of the projects and they are saying that they are setting a fair and reasonable contract for solar project. Definitely, you know, the stakeholders, including municipality, schools and developers and banks or financing sources, again, are supportive of the efforts and we anticipate that contracts will ultimately be published by the Energy Action Network. And so there's a lot of, you know, a lot of thrust here to get this, to get these types of contracts able to, to work. Again, my, my thing is around, you know, the, it's always about, you know, those, you know, what are, what are the resources going to be? And again, I don't necessarily know, and again, you're getting some of that feedback. What are, what's going to be the resources needed by the district to support receiving the credits? And again, I think, you know, that remains my big, you know, my, my question mark. It's not that I'm not interested or maybe, and, and we should, but I just want that to be really clear, that if it's going to take business manager time or someone's going to have to manage, you know, the credits in and out or however that would work, how many hours, should that be city, you know, should it be school, should that be split costs? Those are some of the things that I go, and again, I just want to make sure as we move forward, we're, we're really clear about that.
So, so isn't, isn't it how it works that, that the energy bill that, that the district would get would reflect whatever the credit is? So it's essentially paying the bill that we have to pay anyway, but just paying X amount less presumably if there's been the credit?
I think that you will, it will appear that you have two power companies. You will pay the developer of this development for the power you receive and Green Mountain Power will give you a credit on the bill for that power. So you'll receive a credit from Green Mountain Power that'll be larger than you pay the developer. And thus, the difference is what you would say.
Yeah, your bill from Green Mountain Power will be significantly lower as a result of the credits, and then you pay the developer for the energy for what they're producing.
Right. So we, so we're betting, and this is probably a good bet, that energy costs will go up. So in fact, we could owe more if energy costs went down.
The way they've calculated it right now, and just to give you sort of the, the, the industry standards, over the past 30 years, energy prices have gone up 4.7% average annual basis. I do a lot of work with the Department of Public Service. They have their own most conservative estimate. This is the, the one that they are trying to be as conservative as possible in the next 20 years, is 3.7% increase in average annual electricity rates. But what this agreement has calculated is that even if rates are zero, you will still be having a benefit. Even if rates increase at a 0% rate, you will still have a benefit. If they go down, then that's, that's possibly the risk if energy rates go down. But I've worked in the energy sector for a long time. There's no one out there who thinks they're going to go down.
Right. But I wonder- See where the downside of this is.
So it also appears that we would be obligated to buy a certain amount of energy every year.
Yes.
Do we have any idea what percentage of our energy use currently is?
Approximately 25 to 27% is what they're looking at-
Of our current, of our current use?
In the best case scenario, because the city may actually want to use more, so you might get less than that. But in the, in the absolute maximum, from what it looks like right now, it's about 27% of your current consumption.
But you would use 27%. That 20%, 27%, you wouldn't be billed by Green Mountain Power for it.
No, I, I understand, but we're obligated to-
Right.
I mean, one downside is that somehow we've become so incredibly efficient that we don't need that much power, but we're still obligated to buy it, right?
And most schools that are looking at these deals are looking to try and cover about 70 to 75% of their needs with this kind of agreement because they're giving themselves that wiggle room for efficiency of about 25%. They're hoping to reduce their consumption by about 25%. This is way lower than that. This is around, around 25%.
Is there any opportunity in this, at this site to expand capacity?
Right now, they're doing the engineering studies and they, it's, we can't say right now. We're, we're basing this on the conservative estimate, so there might be a little wiggle room more, but-
But it's not twice or three times?
No.
They're, they're going to build every kilowatt, every watt they can put on, they're going to put on.
So they're limited by the area of land?
Exactly. It's a little over seven acres, seven acres more or less. Interestingly, the city-
What happens when an airplane crashes into it?
That would be bad for, for everyone concerned, most importantly, the people in the plane. The city, the, the city is doing the same math. They took approximately their total power used per year and they said, we're going to mark off 25% for energy savings. Efficiency is we're going to seek over time. So we're only going to seek to fill 20, 75% of our demand. That's why there's extra capacity for you guys, is because the city is being conservative and they want to, they want to leave themselves a challenge for efficiency.
For efficiency, yeah.
Don?
When we first talked, the, the idea was that we would have, it would be a school project only, and the city had the landfill and it wasn't available. So we were wary about that. The thing that David's talking about, resources, we also talked about the district buying the solar panels after seven years and we'd get a lot more money back. But we talked about maintaining solar panels and that's not our primary mission. So I was skeptical. But when David then started working with the city, it makes a lot more sense. That's, that's my- That's, that's my two cents on it.
Having to be a city-based system with us-
With city land.
With us, with city land, and us taking over the, just agreeing to take the available power?
And this is, this is the first one. The, the laws were changed to allow landfills to be used, because there's a lot of municipalities that are very interested in this, and South Burlington would be the first one in the state, although there are several others that are underway as well. And personally, I think it's a terrific use, because you don't have the citing issues. It's land that's not going to be used for any other purpose. It could be used for tremendous savings for both the city and the school. So it's, it is a win-win situation, but I don't want to say that too loudly, because it might be too good to be true. But yeah, it's, it's a really, it's a great-
Sure seems too good to be true.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, I, I know, from the, from the board's perspective, I'm not sure, you know, I don't, I mean, I know this is on for just a, a quick discussion. I do have the Energy Committee committed to come back next week to just do more about what you're working on beyond this. If it's an interest of the board to, to get more questions answered.
Is there a specific timeframe, David, that we would need to sign on from the letter of intent?
As Linda said, I, what I've heard from the city is, you know, they would like to know as, you know, as soon as they could, but there is that kind of two-month, or that a month window or so. I just know that we're not, you know, it's important that we get an answer to them. They've been asking now for a bit, so-
But our, our calendar gets kind of sparse-
Correct. It does.
So it kind of has to come back.
Well, I, I, I would suggest perhaps with some, and we can come up with some questions, some of the questions which I think they've heard, and would be good for the board to get answers to, and maybe there's others that you have that haven't been asked, but-
Do we have to get it vetted through any legal?
Well, I, I think it's important. It's a liability to the district. I, I mean, I, I feel like if we're going to commit, you know, resources, they do have, as I said, some folks, uh, legal resources that are identified as doing pro bono work in this particular area. So I, I think we would, we would look to that to help gain some clarity. Again, I don't, I don't know all the questions to be asked. I'm not, that's not my field of expertise at all. I'm just wanting you to, you know, do you want to look further and pursue it, or do you want to let it go? I mean, is really in your court, not my court.
I'm interested in knowing more.
It seems like it's hard to say no at this point in the game.
So it sounds like we would want to pursue, I, I jotted a couple of the questions down, with the downside of long-term commitment and experience of other schools, a legal review. And then it sounds like, David, there might be an opportunity to kind of come up with an FAQ based on other schools' experiences that we could come back with.
And you folks are hearing those questions. Perhaps you can be a resource to me to get some of those answered would be helpful.
I don't think there's another school with exactly the same opportunity that you have. Most of the other schools have, have had to deal with developers, and it might have been cited on the school property, town property, or on a developer's property. So it's a little more complicated, some of the experiences the other schools have, have experienced, and yet they have gone forward, and other people have gone forward as well.
So I'm hearing-
A general interest to, to move forward, to come, we'll bring it back, so it'll be on the agenda. There'll be a, the solar city school solar array project will be on for action. If there's enough information that allows for enough clarity, we'll have some-
We agreed to approve the letter of intent.
Right.
Approve signing the letter of intent.
Yeah, and what I would work to do is, you know, write off, get some of these questions answered, and get them out to you before the meeting, so.
And if I could suggest, Kevin Dorn has been doing an association along with Alana Blanchard, and they know the exact contractual stipulations, if you will, that they have with the developer. So that, I think you, I would be hesitant to answer official questions. I think Kevin would be-
I did, I have talked and emailed Kevin, this board, and also Alana, and they were going to have, I forget his name. They were going to, he was-
Chad.
Chad was going to also be present to answer some of the board questions. But we'll work to get some of these other questions answered, maybe some of the frequently asked questions that are, that are, have been asked by others. And perhaps Chad and, and city representation can be here on the eighteenth.
I already talked to Chad, and he's ready to be here on the eighteenth. And I think it would be great to have either Kevin or Alana here too, just in case you need to ask them direct questions on, because you'll have a relationship with the city then too, and that's something that needs to be ironed out.
Great. Thank you for coming. Thank you. I'm trying. Next up is the acceptable use procedure and technology, and you do have a fairly thick packet of information. I'm going to allow Stuart to just, you know, kind of walk you through a little bit of that. But I, I don't know, maybe we should start with just general questions, you know, if there's specific questions. What would the board like in this area? Because you may be confused about what you had, so maybe just start there.
Let me just make this small comment. There's a specific price list listed in there for a few items, but it appears to be an old price list, so maybe you might want to update that to current price. I mean, I assume the price has changed, so. That's in the laptop, battery, and it's the charger, the AC adapter, and battery replacement costs. So I mean, if you're going to cite the costs and not cite a price list, we ought to get the current prices. If you have a choice of citing a price list-
Well, no, these, these are the prices when- When the contract was issued last year. We'll update it, of course, when kids sign in the coming year.
But don't we sign a contract every year for new laptops?
Yeah, that's, but this is, but this is the price list for kids if they lose the piece.
So they sign it once, and they take it the rest, that same agreement goes all the way through to the end?
No, no. We'll update this contract in the fall when we reissue.
Fine.
Yeah, you're-
This is last year's contract.
This was then in place, yeah.
Fine.
They, they re-sign it every year.
Yeah.
Fine, as long as it, as long as it represents the current prices when you get it, that's all.
Good point.
The other is that it seems like an awful lot of paper.
Well, part of, and I think it was in one of the question responses, is that we went, one of, some, one of the board members, one of you asked about, seems like exactly that, a lot of paperwork. And that's part of what, again, Stuart and the group was looking at, is how can we consolidate this into? And you know, quite certainly, that there's a lot of information that a parent would see that may not put it all together from the perspective of, you know, what are my obligations here? What, what am I trying to, what am I signing to for my child and for us? So-
It's electronic, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, all, all these things are on links.
Yeah.
We make packets for you all.
Yeah, but it's electronics. Even parents, like, go on and sign it electronically.
Online. And the same with teachers.
Really?
Yeah, I, I mean, we could talk about that in general.
Yeah, I don't recall signing my son's-
You know, we make lots of paper for you all, for things that we don't use paper for in our business.
So how do you prevent forgery from your son? Not that I would suggest my son forged my-
Yeah, they'll call you.
I, I guess I do have one question about, about the one for, for the students. And that is, I don't think in here it spells out perhaps clearly enough repercussions for violating the terms of agreement, including getting your parents' permission for certain things, like stalling software. No, I think that's one thing that's missing from, that I thought was missing, is that it should be spelled out so the kid can understand the ramifications of, of not following these.
I mean-
I mean, they should.
I would suggest-
The piece is, there's, there's a couple of, you know, general pieces, you know, because we're talking about this, so that we have the procedures really set for fall in terms of where we might have redundancies, areas that we, you know, we wanted to show you that we do have these procedures in place right now. You know, one of the things is that our regular discipline procedures follow for violations of various types. In other words, we say in the policy, you can't do these things. And then when you don't do those things, the regular policies that have to do with being inappropriate, you know, and what level of inappropriateness, you know, fall through our regular discipline procedure. And I don't think we want to have a separate technology discipline procedure. We might want to reference, like we often do, the discipline procedures, you know, within the piece.
See, I guess I'm, I'm not sure about that, because this is essentially a contract that you're having the kid sign for getting the laptop. And oftentimes, a contract will include, you know, violation of any terms in this contract will cause you to lose your laptop, or lose it for some period of time, or something like that. I mean, it would help certain parents. Again, not naming any particular parent, of being able to show a term in this contract and, and say, I think you're violating this, and you might just be losing your laptop for a week, or whatever. But I think I'm not-
If we need to be more specific than loss of privileges, we certainly could do that.
Can I, Stuart, can I just ask a question based on a parent question we got today? So it, it sounds like there are some groups at school, they may be sports teams, and they may be other kinds of groups, that, that have their information on a Facebook page, and that's how kids are supposed to get information about whatever it is, practice or whatever. And there is, it sounds like there's a level of frustration amongst some parents that, that the school is basically endorsing Facebook when really it should be a, a parent choice. How do we address that?
So that's the missing piece.
Okay.
So one of the things that you don't have in front of you is obviously social networking has expanded a great deal, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, a variety of things. Even since 2011, I mean, it's one of your, you know, your acceptable use policy or responsible use policy is actually one of the most recently passed policies, but technology moves forward. So we do have a committee to have that piece in place for the fall. That's what, you know, David has given us the indication, so that when the next school year starts, we have some clear answers on that. So I can't answer that right now, but I, I, I am aware of the concern, and so are other people in the technology departments here.
Let me just, just very quickly, and, and-
Back to what my point was, where you say inappropriate use may result in loss of privileges. That's kind of where I'd been looking for. I think you just need to spell out, maybe put in bold, that violation of any term, any of these terms, or inappropriate use. I, I think it just makes it easier to enforce that contract, so.
So again, we're, we're getting this out for discussion. I mean, and you heard, there's, there's more happening on this, and, and I think we need to keep you abreast of what's, what's going on and what are the changes. This was, the idea was just to have a discussion about this, and number one, are we asking, you know, some of these questions? Do we have systems in play? Do we have forms available? And I think what you should know is that we do. Are we asking and collecting all of the right pieces? This is kind of what Martin's on, so we're, we're on to that. But I think there, there's, there is that, that question around that social network piece that we've got to figure out. And actually, I, I just got a, a new article that I, I'm going to get to, to Stuart on some models that are happening in other, in other school districts in other parts of the country around how to do this.
And just to be, I don't in contact, and I'm not saying this is the direction to go. I mean, when you look at the kind of feedback we've gotten for video cameras, but there are actually companies that, you know, do word searches through school networks to see if there are key words that come up, you know, and inform. And, and I am in contact with a group, a local Vermont group, that does that kind of work, just to see what it is that, that they're doing, and whether that's some other directions to pursue. And I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't. I'm just saying there's stuff out there that didn't exist two years ago, because there's stuff out there that didn't exist two years ago.
So I think, you know, we're, we're going to keep working on it. We'll, we'll bring it back to you again. Again, this was one that came off of our future agenda items, and we're moving along, so we'll, we'll keep you posted. All right? So what I'd like to do now is actually, Gail is overworking away over in the, in the darkness. But Gail Kilkelly, if she'd come over and join us, has provided, she has a little bit of just some discussion. She did provide a report to you. Gail, as you know, is our, our visual and performing arts curriculum area supervisor. And she has put a, a report together just to give you a little bit of information around our, our program. So, Gail, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The, the report actually is a collaboration between Stuart and I. Stuart has given me information on grades three K or K through five. And my curriculum area supervisor responsibilities include grades six through twelve. We have a very robust music program. I have attached a number of research projects at the end, including a presentation that I've given around the state on the benefits of being involved in a rigorous and robust arts education program. And just to remind you that the restructuring we did a couple of years ago for this position includes the visual and performing arts. So I would look forward to giving you a similar report on the visual arts in the future and the drama after-school programs.
So I think, again, in fairness of time, I don't know how many of you had the chance to look at it, but there may be some specific questions or things you might want, or things you noticed, you know? I think you heard some of this tonight, actually, not so much on the Gail's sector, but, you know, some of the, this, of our three schools, some of the inequity maybe, or, or unbalance maybe is a better word, between the three elementary schools. And that's been, you know, that, there are obviously, with our community schools, there are different things that happen at different times, and they happen in different ways, based on kind of the culture, the desire, et cetera. But that's certainly something that I think we want to pay attention to. We want kids to have similar experience, not exact, but similar experiences in, you know, in the, in the music program or in the arts programs, so that when they get here to our, then, middle school or high school, they've, they've had the opportunities, you know, similarly. So I, I don't know if there's specific questions or things you've noticed.
I would just like to ask a little bit about the string ensemble that's coming, coming soon to a school near us.
Well, what, what we're proposing for the POS, the program of study for the high school, which of course is the way students decide what they're going to take, it's very much like a college program. And, and in the visual performing arts, we've tried to not only address the needs of kind of a, a classically or traditionally trained artist, visual performing arts, but also in picking up on student interests, as well as looking at student interests that exhibit themselves outside of school, that the school has either not embraced for a while or could re-embrace. And the string program, or the string ensemble, a class at the high school, is one way of doing that. Corolla Troidel, who is currently a music teacher here in the middle school, as well as the music technology person, and has taught some technology courses, began here in South Burlington as the string teacher. And she taught lessons as well as ensembles. We have many students, both in the, well, probably also in the elementary school, but I know mostly in the middle and high school, that take string lessons outside of school. One of the opportunities students have, living in Chittenden County, of course, is the Vermont Youth Orchestra. But we don't have a place for them to come together within the school. So I've had parents talk to me in the middle school, and also students in the high school, and we, we try to incorporate those students where, where appropriate. We could even have string players, and I think we do have string players in some of the jazz ensembles. But really, to have a group come together and, and work on appropriate literature for a string ensemble. Corolla has expertise in this, and I had a conversation with her, asking if she would be willing to write up the program of study papers that are then approved by the high school administration. Then we put it into the course book, and that would be the course book that comes in next January. And then if enough students signed up for it, then we would have enough enrollment to run it the following year. So it's just another way of, of listening to parents and listening to students' interests. The same was done when I knew that there were students who were interested in music classes, but who really aren't interested in performing. So we've also created a piano, sorry, a music theory and piano class that has no performance requirement outside of the class, where students can learn to play piano, learn a little bit about chord structure, and then maybe take that information and move it over to the music created, using technology class that Corolla teaches.
So with the, the string ensemble, would it be, the idea be giving an opportunity for our high school kids to be able to get together and play together? Or is it going to be a lot of instruction on how to play the violin? It seems more the former than the latter.
Yes, more the former. We're not necessarily looking to start students off in string instruments. These are students who already play.
So would it be like the jazz ensemble where, where there's auditions, or not necessarily?
It doesn't necessarily have to be that. I mean, you, you can choose literature on a number of different areas, a, a number of different, I mean, it would really depend on what the students bring to the class. It's not unlike having a chorus, where you have students who have great experiences outside of school and other students who have never sung a note. So looking- have never sung a note. So, looking at the composition of the students that come in and where can we fit it in. Certainly in string literature, you'll have first violin and you'll have fourth violin. And just work within that.
And I think this is a tribute to the, the high school definitely, as you know, maybe you don't know, but has, with the course of study and the kid's ability to sign up to those things. And again, having our, our ears open around what, what's happening and it's definitely responding to some of those things, still being very clear about our desire in their curriculum around providing these experiences around the importance of the arts and making sure that those are available. So-
The one other thing I'd say, I'm sorry to obsess about the string ensemble. But, but is there a possibility, if there's not as much interest in the high school, is there a possibility of reaching into the, to the middle school, so long as the middle school students are intermediate or at a certain level, just to make sure that, that opportunity is provided?
I, I would certainly be open to that. The middle school structure is different. It's not necessarily based on the numbers of students who enroll in a course and the course goes, like in college. The middle schools is a bit different than that, but I would be very happy if we had a string ensemble here.
And obviously part of this, I mean, these are ideas, it's part of the budget building process, part of the, you know, all, all of those things. So, how we use our resources currently, as, as Gail said, we have some people that have the expertise to do that. So, that's all part and play of it as well. But again, just giving you a flavor for some of the current and future thinking of program.
I have one question. So, I know that there's often some conflict scheduling for especially kids at the high school who really want to maintain some, some participation in music, but for instance, it, it jazz band conflicts with AP physics or something that's pretty critical to their curriculum. And it's such a shame, I think, for so many families that end up having to make that choice, which is sadly usually ends up being AP physics. And is there a way to, to circumvent that or, you know, alleviate that problem? I, maybe there's not, but-
Well, I, I know that our, our gurus of scheduling, Pat Phillips and Tim Wile, really struggle with that when they're looking at what students have chosen and then how is it going to be scheduled. And we also have to consider being six twelve CIS that a number of our teachers are shared between the two buildings. And so, how does kind of the big picture work? We would be very happy if those decisions never had to be made. I, I think the people who work on the scheduling try very, very hard to minimize that. In some instances, going to the visual arts, it is possible for students to sign up to do an independent study. That is possible in music as well. In fact, we had one, an independent study student in the, in the composition class that Corolla Troy teaches, who could schedule it in, but then could still compose in the evening or outside of school and then bring it to her for feedback. There are some classes that are more appropriate to that than others. So, we, we try really hard to meet the students where they are and to give them an opportunity if we possibly can.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
The only other thing I would say is that, being an advocate for arts education, there is quite a bit of brain research now, talking about how students think when they're involved with the arts. And being a music teacher, my, the research I've read is more concerned about music, that there, there really is a way that, that students learn to use their brains in different ways when they're involved in music endeavors. I personally don't think it's an accident that we are such a high-performing school system and we have such robust music programs and visual art programs. I don't think that's an accident. And I think that is really to applaud the work that the board has done, past boards as well as this board, because that education of the whole child is really what helps us see those kids be so successful in all the different levels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on, next on the administrative reports is the alumni report. It is in your packet. I know I did get some questions from the board and I think it's just, just to make sure you all are aware, there was, you know, again, questions on job description and so that, I think, did get provided to you. You know, this particular area for the district, I think, remains one of those pieces, one of those areas that needs some administrative focus. Focus, drive, marketing, bigger thinking, how does it, how does this particularly meld with mentorship, wellness and resilience, alumni, foundation, who oversees it, what is the goal, purpose, et cetera. Currently, this, this position functions to make some, make some important connections to our alumni, alumni and inform them. It also acts as a agent of collecting funds that come in to the alumni folks and then provides that money to the foundation or through the, through to the foundation. It was never set up initially. Again, it was more of a, more of an FTE position than it is now. It was reduced from a one-oh to a point eight to a point six as a result of some budget restrictions. And it remains at a point six. And again, it remains there fundamentally because I, at this point, as I've alluded to, need to figure out where it fits in the larger picture of the district and what, what is, you know, the, the long-range plan. And I've not been interested to increase it until that can be done. I do think, quite honestly, that there's a lot more that we can be doing in this area. We have an awful lot of, you know, our alumni that are out there that I think would very much like to give back if they knew more about what we were doing as a district and we involve them in some way regardless of where they live. So, this gives you a little flavor of some of the activity, but I'm, I'm sure you have other questions and let me take those.
To try to fill some, a lot of big gaps in my understanding in this particular area, it's, it sounds to me like the flow of this thing is that the district is funding on a part-time basis a person who's, from a financial standpoint, following the dollars, main role is to bring in money that gets turned over to the foundation and then comes back to the students in the form of scholarships. Did I oversimplify things, Stuart?
Or, or other related initiatives, paying back the district for money, or, you know, there's a variety of ways in which then that money would be used.
Okay. Well, I'm happy that you're trying to rethink the situation, try to figure out what makes sense. Okay?
Can you, could you just, I, I think for everybody's benefit, there was at one time a foundation director, right? And can you speak to that for a second?
Yeah, this, this position actually was a alumni and foundation position. And-
Within the foundation?
Well, it was a shared, it was a shared responsibility, alumni and foundation. I'm not getting the right, I'm not recalling the right title of the position.
But I, even before that, David, wasn't there like someone who was specifically fundraising for the district?
Yes. And again, they had the alumni sidebar title, but it was more of a focus. And this was initially set up back when funding, the funding mechanism was at a very disadvantageous place. And so, it meant, made great sense to have a foundation where, where money could come in and then offset the, the general budget. And so, it was a primary foundation person. And it was also a result of, I think, a fairly large gift amount that came to then be used for the district for, you know, the, the Munson Fields specifically. Obviously, as we went through time and there wasn't money coming in from the foundation, there was a decision made by administration to say, we can't do this. We, we reduce it to only alumni, with the idea that we, we knew alumni were an important part of, of the district and giving back and supporting reunions and being a conduit for, for money coming in. So, it remained at point eight and then was reduced to point six. And that's where it resides.
I think, I mean, I think the, well, I wouldn't call it the demise, the, it's gone into, into hibernation, was, there was a period of time when I first got on the board where there was, there was this chunk of money and there was more money that could have been raised, but they couldn't figure out what to raise it for and what to use it for. There was going to be a comoli fund for technology, but that was right at the point where we were going into doing a broader one-to-one initiative. So, that's actually, you know, there wasn't any appropriate thing on which to, to spend or, or to raise, well, I should say, raise and then spend money. Like, if we had, wanted to put in a swimming pool, which, I, that would be like a, a definitive kind of thing, like the field was. But there wasn't anything like that and they were looking for something like that. And that's, at least that's where I saw the wind go out of the sails of the foundation, that they couldn't figure out what to raise and spend money on.
It's a fair assessment. Right now, because, again, we go, we'll go back to master plan or what are the things that we're working on and want now and into the future, so that we can allow, you know, the foundation to be more active in helping us leverage those resources that might come from alumni and other places. We haven't had that. And in part, we also had some situations going on where, you know, we were very, very ingrained and excited about bringing on, you know, a turf and bleachers, but there wasn't necessarily, you know, hard numbers that were established. And so, there was a deficit that was in there that the foundation also needed to, I would say, pay off before you go out and try new things. And that wasn't very exciting, I think, for the foundation. So, that also sent it into, you know, kind of the hibernation mode. And again, I, I feel that there's an important piece here. I don't want to do this in isolation, though. I feel there's a bigger need to look at organizational structure. Again, right back to the, as I said, and administrators know and we're setting this up, is what are the have-tos and expectations? What are the systems that we have? What are the wants? This being one of them, that may have, you know, opportunities and resources coming in, but do we have the organizational structure to do it? If we don't, can we go out and put it in the budget now and into the future? It's kind of the methodology that I feel really needs to be applied to this. I need, we need to either, we need to figure this out-
And breathe some life into it.
-or, or not. And again, important for us to figure that out.
Yeah, I think they need a mission first before-
Yep.
-taking the next step of rejuvenating it.
So, I think the word hibernation has been what, you know, what both foundation and I would say alumni, although the alumni person has done, I would say, excellent work around keeping it being a positive conduit for our, you know, our alumni groups. There's a really neat thing, the Rebel Reach, I just want to highlight that. And this is, I mean, again, I think we're on to something here where we've got a class, the class of nineteen sixty-seven has sponsored the freshman incoming class. And they're going to stay with them for the entire period. They're going to mentor them. They're helping them to have, you know, experiences. They're creating really important fundraising opportunities for them, things that they can, that do appropriately. Again, those, those are some really interesting pieces, the, the scholarships, et cetera. You can read some of the things that are going on there. So-
Yeah, just one comment I'd make is I, I was disappointed in this report in that it was, it, it came across to me as a bit of a laundry list of activity versus what, what were the outcomes. So, I, I would like to ask, one of the questions I know I asked is for a financial statement. So, if you wouldn't mind following up on that, to provide that at a minimum. But for instance, this Rebel Reach is, is a program you've cited that seems to have a little more robustness to it.
Mm-hmm.
But there also isn't a specific outcome other than the relationship building between the classes. So, I suspect there's an intent there.
Yep.
And I guess, you know, as Martin mentioned, is there, is there a goal or is there a mission that maybe not project-based, but it might be, it might be donation-based or something to that effect. And, and I think there should be that element for a lot of this functions activities.
John, I want to give you an opportunity. I mean, John has helped out with also with the, the kind of the financial policing, but any, anything that you'd like to add? Again, you've done a lot of work with them.
The alumni fund goes, doesn't go through my office at all. It, it's handled by a volunteer CPA who files the nine ninety forms and the, Joanne Abad is the coordinator, but the foundation money is what I'm talking about. The, this position itself's in the general fund budget and it's point six FTE and there's office supplies and a, a minimum overhead on that. So, that's what you'd see in the financial from me.
Well, what about the sources and uses of funds? There's some scholarships here and it looks like the, over fifty thousand has come in through the foundation. This was specific to foundation.
Uh-huh.
So, I mean, I'm anticipating something specific to the sources and uses on scholarships at a minimum. And then the foundation component, is that, that is a separate financial statement, I assume?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think your, your question is-
But the, the fund, the foundation is where the scholarships would be too, so.
Oh, do they are?
Yeah.
So, is the only-
That's where they rest, is those, those scholarships when parents give them. And that has been housed, where they've been housed. Your question, I think, is what, what we pay for the position-
Mm-hmm.
-and what comes in and goes to the foundation. What, what kind of is that financial?
Right. And there's, and there's also kind of the, there's, there seems to be an element of some legacy giving here.
Mm-hmm.
It, vis-à-vis endowments or some other, whatever you might call them. But where is the, where's the new, new generation of funds? Like what-
What new activities have happened?
What's kind of annuity and what's, you know, kind of on a annual basis?
Mm-hmm.
Or, I'm sorry, I rephrased it wrong. Correct, yes. That's what I'm trying to say. You can tell I'm exhausted.
Well, I, I mean, we'll get the information, but it comes to the alumni accounts. It's not, doesn't go through the district's accounts. It's a separate tax, corporate tax ID, nonprofit. So, yes, we, we'll get that for you.
Yeah, do you have a financial report on an annual basis? I mean, I remember-
Yeah, well, so that CPA who, we should be able to see that, right?
Yeah.
And, and do we have some liability if we have a district-paid employee managing a, an independent fund?
I mean, that's a good question.
This question, I think, has come up before too.
I became less tired of that.
I know.
Well, I mean, we, we do have, again, the way the structure of the foundation board is, even in its hibernation state, it still does have a board that does have oversight over the financials. So, and the board, and the board has a representation.
Really? I mean, they meet like once a year, right?
Well, again, it's in hibernation, but I'm, that's loosely-
Do you see financial statements at that time?
I think so. It's been over a year, so.
So-
It's, it's- I do have a project that would jumpstart the, the, the project. The turf field, I've said it before, but on June thirty of two thousand sixteen, it's pretty much done. We've, we've had the, we had the manufacturer come and do their annual maintenance. And, and we're, we're over warranty, we're over normal life, and we've taken care of it really well. But I, I see two more football seasons and, and it'd have, it'll have to be replaced.
Well, it's, it sounds like this is a pretty timely discussion in that there's an opportunity to review, you know, financials, to talk about, you know, opportunities like that, John, and if, if there are others that might exist, and to understand the role of the alumni office and sort of bridging that.
Yeah, and there's another important thing, actually, having Elizabeth Walker here, because I'm curious what her experience was. As, as I think everybody knows, Elizabeth raised, was spearheaded raising a significant amount of money for the central school playground. And that could have been a foundation project, but it seems like the foundation is, my experience in looking at it now, is almost like high school oriented. And that's because the alumni directors at the high school, Principal Burke is, is on the board. And that always seemed to be where they were looking. I don't think they looked beyond the high school. And maybe that's-
Maybe it should be district-oriented.
What, maybe it should. Well, it doesn't say it's supposed to be just high school-oriented, but that's kind of what-
That's also feedback I've received before-
Right.
-an opportunity to make it more district-wide.
Right. Did, did you talk to the, to any of the folks with the foundation, Elizabeth, or?
Absolutely. I was actually at that meeting when Pat Burke was talking about the alumni and the foundation being two separate entities. And we had met with Pat Burke to discuss how we could incorporate the central project, and not just the central project, but all the school's projects under this umbrella of the Alumni Foundation and how great that idea would be. And I was also in contact with Joanne. And she did through the South Burlington Alumni Facebook page and through an email. She did reach out. I had written something up and she sent it out. And I guess there just wasn't much coming back.
So, just curious, who did she send it out to, do you know?
She has a list.
But she sent it out to all alumni or?
She has a database.
As far as I know, she just needs to click a button and it goes.
Interesting.
And so, it was a quick flip. It was also, the timing was on the district, it was about the same time that Pat Burke had found out what was happening, which was horrible.
So, here's, here's a perfect example on system issues, right?
It's around maintaining a database of our alumni. It's around maintaining a database of our alumni, that's, again, another system and, you know, that's been also been a struggle to maintain that. And, um, how's that maintained, who maintains it, where do we get it, you know, uh, how current it is? Um, and so those are some of the challenges that we work with Jo- Joanne on around even IT and technical support to make sure that's, you know, updated. And you can imagine, it's not a stagnant group, right? We have a lot of alumni that are moving, you know, on a regular basis and there's companies that do this, you know, to help manage that. So that, that remains a struggle for us on, on how good it is. So, some of you who are sitting here could be, you know, SB alumni, say, "I didn't get anything." That's our struggle and that's part of the system, uh, some of the system issues that we need to look at. So, you had
Yeah, I was just gonna give a little historical, because Pete Ross, when he was the assistant principal at the high school, basically got a grant that got this off the ground. And so even though I don't think the intent was ever for it to be a high school thing, since the first project was the field, because the person who had the vision to, you know, who came out of the private school sector in which this kind of thing is done all the time, you know, with alumni and others of the school, it, it, it kind of drove, you know, some of its first focus. Obviously, Matt Giedt, who works here and is another South Burlington alumni, you know, was on the board from the beginning. And so I think the, the intent has always been for it to be bigger in scope. But again, I think, you know, Martin cites, you know, it's, you know, what are you concretely raising money for in a public school segment where we're also paying taxes? It, it's really important to, to begin to, if you really want it to be robust, to begin to get those kinds of words out, whether it's the central playground or whatever, so that people see where it fits in the big scheme of things because, you know, it can't really be used to run day-to-days, you know? And that's, you know, that's kind of our
So I think, I mean, this, this has been a good conversation. I think this is one, David, we're probably gonna want to keep active and, um, get on an agenda again with a little bit more specificity and, and continue that dialogue.
Yep, and again, part of, as you know, we've got, we have a lot that we're trying to accomplish this summer. We're gonna kick it off with our retreat, but this is in part, you know, some of the, the programs that we need to, we need to figure out. So, thank you.
All right, move on to Agenda Item 13. And we took this off the Agenda for Action and I'll just report out on this, that, um, the board in executive session did a preliminary sort of short, shortened version of, of a review and, um, looking at accountability of the superintendent and we have a follow-up, um, next week as well. Uh, and we'll take it to public, um, action shortly thereafter.
Thank you, Board.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 14, setting the agenda for the June 18th meeting.
So one of the things on that, um, we said we'd bring back was, um, big picture.
Can we take off, uh, fifth grade?
Yes, we can. Would have been wrong of me to take it off for now, but makes sense.
Why put the bids?
Bids, yep.
Central school playground.
Also, we need, uh, action on the performance evaluation audit.
Right.
Uh, one, yeah, one thing I would do in advance of that is gauge the interest, uh, of Donna in doing it still, because she had a question of whether she wanted to, in fact, proceed and do this.
Sarah, you mean?
Sarah.
Yeah.
Was it Donna?
Yeah.
It's, I've been going since nine o'clock.
I know, we've been, we've been going since one o'clock, we're tired.
Uh, what else is on from our, the other thing is that if you could add, um, I don't know if it needs to be in action, I, maybe it does, uh, res- it probably does actually, resolutions for the
Board resolution.
Because we need to have that by the end of this month. I will have at least one drafted in advance to look at regarding the, uh, funding of, uh, big picture, not funding, but tuition payment for at least the big picture. Not resolving the whole 129 issue, but at least that narrower issue. And if anybody has any ideas in advance of that? Ifing in to me, I can try to put them into, uh, some sort of resolution language for consideration.
But one other thing that you, we may wanna, I mean, not now, but we have the legislative, um, breakfast coming up post-session. Maybe there are things on there that we've, that we've visited before. Maybe there's some things on there that we, the board may consider just to have in there as resolution. Some of those things, again, Martin brings up, um, you know, enrollment or tuition, Act 129. I mean, there's probably a series of other things. We have the retirement, some of the retirement pieces that, that went into play. Maybe there's some, some of those pieces that we want to consider as resolution actions as opposed to just talking about them.
Okay. Anything else on the June 18th agenda? All right. Uh, anything needed to be added to future agenda items or deleted from the list?
Before we do either, I'd like to make a suggestion on how to manage this because I'm a little frustrated by these things having, some of these things have been on here since I've been on the board.
You're sitting too close to Diane.
So, and Diane influences me too. So I would like to suggest two things. First of all, there are a couple of things on there, notably this one at the noise at the Chamberlain School that isn't gonna happen until something else happens, okay? So this is, you know, we re- the thing we really should be tracking here is the city's
Committee.
Grant committee thing and then figure out whether this goes back on the agenda then, that's one suggestion. Another suggestion is just to keep us honest about whether we're serious about these things is if every meeting, we could just tally how many meetings it's been on the agenda, on this thing and just sort of resolve that when we get to some number like 43 that we decide we really aren't interested in this one?
Forty-three checks.
We're very tiny group, follow up.
So I understand there's a little bit of administrative stuff to do, but I think if we just started with everything now at one and went forward, I'm not looking to go back and try to figure out resurrect history, but just to give a sort of a management tool about just a sanity check on, are we serious about these things?
So is there, is there agreement that maybe we should, um, just, uh, instead of the noise at Chamberlain, just track the city grant?
That would be my recommendation.
Well, let me, remind me of what the, how that
The city grant is the
No, I know what the grant is, but how it impacts
The city has one associated with the airport and one associated with the so-called Chamberlain neighborhood. To look at, basically
Noise reduction.
A lot of dynamics associated with what's happening over there in terms of the, the land values and, uh, and land use and among those is, as I understand it, some better understanding of what the noise is. And as I recall, several months ago now, we postponed doing anything about this thing until we got the results of those studies to try to figure out whether, you know, with the argument being that if that's in the works, how do we get a, what, what good do we do trying to get it, push it ahead independently?
Right, and, and that'll, when that comes out, will be a prompt for us to do something.
Then that would be a prompt to, uh, to say, okay, do we put, does that go on the agenda or not? And then we don't have to feel so bad about it sitting here because it's out of our control.
Right, right, no.
I also think that for that particular one, we also wanted to hear from people who go to the school every day. I mean, par- I mean, I, I know we want to hear from the city and what they're doing, but this, as I recall, we wanted to hear how teachers were experiencing the noise, students, like sort of firsthand accounts.
I mean, we do have school representation on the city grant committee. So, I am, I'm, I don't want to put words in David's mouth, but I'm anticipating that, that some of that feedback would get collected through the committee grant.
I'm presuming that we would have at some point a, a, a presentation that summarized that to us and it might be appropriate at that time to ring in some comments from, invite comments from teachers, administrators, public.
So with the board's acknowledgement or consensus, we will eliminate noise at Chamberlain School issues and suggestions and rephrase that one as, um, track city grant committee work?
Yeah, we'll name that one, I'll tag it a specific name, I can't remember, it's, uh, you know, whatever that, that grant. The city school Chamberlain community grants or something.
And I would just say the master planning and financial stewardship, one, I mean, we've referenced that a couple different times tonight as a benchmark for things that we need that to happen in order to do anything else. So I think we need to somehow get that scheduled, if you will.
That is, that's the, that's the September
That's the September, okay, so
Is that the pork chop or the tree?
Well, that's the September
Do we need that on there if it's happening?
Yeah, if we have it on the schedule, let's take it off here.
If we, if we know what it's gonna be, we just put the date on that it's gonna be.
Right.
And then if we don't do it, we'll
We'll be back at you.
That's right. Okay.
Um, and is there consensus, we ought to just sort of start putting a check mark by each of these, so we kind of have a gauge?
How many times they've been in front?
Yeah. Okay. All right, good suggestion.
Paper.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda
You know you can always get a suggestion from me about anything.
It's a good one. Agenda Item 16, consider the minutes of the meeting of May 20th. So everyone had a chance.
One addition is that after David left the meeting at one point in time for, before we discussed personnel, I don't know if that needs to reflect that. It's, um, right at the end of before it says personnel matter, David left the meeting.
So to make a note, um, either prior to or at there that
Oh, right, and then I left, I, I'll just, we'll, we'll make that correction and bring it back to you.
I just, this is just not a busy, but, um, where it says that I attended the packed community dinner, I think that was under announcements, not the student representative report.
She was making, she was reading the announcements for David, that's why it's there.
That's what she was doing, yeah.
Okay. Because I remember I said, that was where I handed, I showed everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
She started combining those things.
And we put it at the beginning of the announcements too, because we wanted to make sure, you know, people who aren't around, you know, got a chance to hear the announcements before the later hours of the evening.
So seeing no other changes, the minutes of May 20th with that one change is approved, are approved. And we'll move to the, um, meeting minutes of May 29th. Any changes or corrections? All right, seeing none, those are approved. Uh, we'll move on to Agenda Item 17, the consent agenda. And we have a number of hires as well as, uh, do we have the truck, oh yeah, we do have the truck bid as well.
And there is no, there's, the playground was removed.
Yeah. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Certainly.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Any questions on AP orders as listed on Agenda Item 18? All right, thank you. And, um, David, do you want to just discuss Agenda, uh, Item 19?
Yes, if I know what I'm talking about now, because I'm confused. John, can you help me with that?
Right, there's, the Howard Center, we pay them all the time for various services. Every quarter, we pay them for the social services work that they do and that, that puts us over the 50,000 limit for contractual services. So of the 70,000, 56 is the final payment for our school-based clinicians for the year.
Thank you, John.
Are there any questions on that? All right, do I have a motion to approve the AP check to Howard Center in the amount of $70,370.79?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? And do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? We're gonna write that down. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.